Good evening, welcome to the January 9th, 2023 meeting of our Historic Zoning Commission. Like to call the meeting to order, and tonight for our first item of the minutes of November the 14th, 2022, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Someone.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Astained.
Gotcha. All right, our next order of business is consideration of the 2023 Commission Chair and Vice Chair. This is in accordance with the bylaws that we need to have an election each January. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to re-nominate the Commission Chair Jim Roberts and Vice Chair Mary Pierce.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Is that Josh? Brian, okay. Any discussion? Any other nominations? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, Amanda, announcements.
Thank you, everyone. First and foremost, I would like to welcome our newest member to the Historic Zoning Commission. We have Planning Commissioner Scott Harrison with us. He is the Planning Commission representative as required by state law for the Historic Zoning Commission, so thank you for joining us. We're very excited to work with you.
My pleasure, glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to remind everyone that we have a Design Review Committee meeting next week. We do have a federal holiday on Monday, so the meeting will take place on Tuesday, January 17th at 4:00 PM here in the boardroom. Okay, thank you.
And let the record show that Ms. Worthington has joined us. Happy New Year. Now, are there any items that we need to put on the non-agenda item list, Amanda?
Not that I have received.
Okay. Now, the next item is for citizen comments on items that are not on the agenda. It's open for Franklin citizens to be heard on items that are not included on today's agenda, and as provided by law, the Historic Zoning Commission shall make no decisions or consideration of action by the citizen comments except to refer to the matter to the Planning Director for administrative consideration or to schedule the matter for historic zoning consideration if appropriate at a later date. So, welcome. If you would please identify yourself.
Laura Turner, 1108 Dickinson Lane, Franklin. I'm here to speak on behalf of the historic footprint of St. Paul's, which is a major historic icon of Franklin. There's a print in the county mayor's office titled Historic Franklin, and St. Paul's is front and center. I know St. Paul's is not included in the historic overlay for Hensyville. At the Tennessee Historical Commission meeting in January 2020, the relatively new rector of St. Paul's requested that the church be moved from the National Register of Historic Places. When the difference between the listing on the National Register and the historic overlay zoning was explained to him, he allowed the church to remain on the register. The rector does not want any historic oversight over his plans to demolish the historic footprint of the church behind the sanctuary to build a second-story building. The needed changes to install ramps to comply with the Americans for Disabilities Act of 1990 can easily be accommodated in the existing structure. Years ago, visionary leaders of the church purchased the first Tennessee bank building behind the church for future growth. This building is not historic and can accommodate growth without harming the historic, culturally significant, and sacred sanctuary of St. Paul's. In November, the head of the Construction Committee, Bob Larson, stated that 906 architects have identified three contractors, and the church will select one in December. I and others have been vocal about opposition to these plans, which will also put in jeopardy 150-year-old urban pecan tree. Mr. Larson further stated, and I quote, "We plan to have a meeting with the Historic Zoning Committee. This is not mandatory, but we want to be transparent with the city on what we are doing. We certainly have a lot happening," this is in quotes, "behind the scenes," end quote, "and there will be exciting things to share shortly," end quote. St. Paul's is the mother church of the Episcopal Diocese of Tennessee and the oldest church established in 1827 at Masonic Hall. What St. Paul's does to itself affects the historic city of Franklin. When these plans are shared with you, I respectfully request your support for preserving and protecting its historic footprint. Short-sighted development will destroy its historic integrity, robbing future generations of its awe." Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else that'd like to speak?
I'm Nell Henderson. I'm married to John Henderson. I live at 202 Revere Lane, Franklin, Tennessee. Welcome to Historic Franklin. I pass this sign numerous times a day. As the gatekeepers of this beautiful southern community, we need to be constantly aware of the renovations and remodeling of our most important landmarks. As a 33-year member of St. Paul's, married to a 75-year member of St. Paul's, you're a member. He's older than that, but he's been a member of this church for 75 years. We have a passion to protect our glorious historic church, St. Paul's. My husband, John Henderson, former early president of the Heritage Foundation, is most concerned with the recent developments that we have. John is not in very good health at this time, and he's allowed me to read this letter that he sent to our communicants earlier when this campaign first started, and he gave me permission to read this, so you'll be--this is his voice speaking. "We, the communicants of St. Paul's, are deeply concerned that its historical essence will be extensively damaged if the ongoing Capitol Campaign Committee continues on its present course without necessary readjustment. Several of us even trace our memberships at least as far back as the mid-1950s, when the parish began its slow but steady rise from financial insecurity to today's stability. We're not questioning the money-raising aspect of the project, but only its construction phase. We feel that the Capitol Campaign will be more amendable to the congregation as a whole if certain corrective measures are taken, namely, number one. Long before final architectural plans and specifications are prepared and submitted to the vestry for approval, the expertise of a preservationist well-versed in renovation and expansion of historic church facilities should be utilized. The offices of the Tennessee bishops and council and the presiding bishops are excellent sources in this regard. Extreme care should be taken to prevent the damage to the roots of the tree," since this is the long letter I will--this Laura has already covered most of this. "Number three, the best location for the step-free location to Ody Hall is within the framework of the existing Education Administration Building. A walkway closer to Sixth Avenue further intrudes upon the roots and health of our ancient pecan tree." That was the third point. "Number four, Ody Hall, with its beautiful walnut wainscoting and period shuttering, bears the name of our visionary founder, and though enlarged, should remain as is as much as possible. The proposed elaborate crossbeams in the ceiling, modern twin chimneys, and floor-to-ceiling shutterless windows on Busy Fair Street all give this beautiful room the ambience more of a cafeteria than a much-needed space for group meetings, wedding receptions, and funeral revisitations." "Number five, renovation of the parish's facilities and furnishings should all be in keeping with its illustrious history and the unique position it holds in the founding of the diocese. Before embarking on a project of this nature, it is suggested that parish leadership visit other historic Episcopal churches in Tennessee, such as Christ Church Cathedral in Nashville, St. Peter's in Columbia, St. Luke's in Jackson, all of whom underwent major construction of every turn in the mid-late 20th century without depreciating their significance as historic structures. In lieu of replacing a well-construction Education Administration Building with a completely new two-story facility on its present location, Barnum should be converted into a two-story structure housing the youth center, additional classrooms, AA meeting space, and the counseling center downstairs, and the administration offices upstairs. At least one office, staffed by the volunteers or employees, should remain in the existing Education Administration Building during regular business hours. Adoption of this alternative site would lessen substantially the overall cost of construction, minimize the disruption of services during construction, lessen and avoid possible damage to the historic pecan tree in the Sixth Avenue courtyard, and provide a superior location for the parish's present and future needs. St. Paul's is twice listed on the National Register of Historic Places, the church itself in 1972, and is part of the Hensyville Historic District in 1985. We should take especial care not to harm the parish's singular listings on national registers by taking missteps that once made cannot be easily counteracted." And this was signed by several of our communicants that also signed this letter, and this was presented to our vestry. My husband and I also spoke to the vestry, encouraging them to at least listen to the experts, and we are aware of all this, but since you will be hearing from them about this more modern concept, there are other people in the church that did want us to call attention to the fact that this is a bit more contemporary for a 19th-century historic preservation, and this is one of our major landmarks. So we hope that you all will be able to point out its importance and its heritage to Franklin and for the future generations of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Is anyone else that'd like to speak? All right, we're ready for our first item on tonight's agenda. Consideration of wall construction and signage at 1001 Benelli Park Court. Jim Poole, applicant.
Okay.
Emily, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant appeared before the Design Review Committee to discuss the proposal at its October 17th, 2022, meeting and the December 19th, '22 meeting. The proposal includes the construction of a retaining wall with an attached sign for the residential infill neighborhood. The wall will be at the entrance of Benelli Park Court and will face onto Boyd Mill Avenue and will be set five feet from the right-of-way. The wall will measure 20 feet in length, 3 feet 4 inches in height, and will be 2 feet 6 inches wide, and will consist of a stone material that will blend with the other existing stone walls that are seen on Boyd Mill Avenue. The wall will taper away from Benelli Park Court as the need to retain the land lessens. This will further keep with the style of the walls in the neighborhood. The sign that will be attached to the wall will utilize 8-inch aluminum letters to spell out Benelli and will measure 3.67 square feet. Uplighting will also be used to eliminate the sign and the oak tree. The guidelines recommend that the retaining wall material should be similar in scale, texture, color, and form to those historically used in the district. This proposal meets this guideline by utilizing a stone material that is similar to what is seen on Boyd Mill Avenue. Additionally, the applicant has adjusted the original design based on feedback from the DRC in order to better meet the intent of this guideline. The guidelines recommend that development entrance signs have a maximum sign area of five square feet with a column cap maximum of seven feet. The proposal meets these guidelines by measuring 3 feet 4 inches in height and 3.67 square footage for the sign, square footage. Additionally, the guidelines recommend that illumination should be used with a warm white light, which does not distort the color of building materials or finishes. Illumination for development entrance signs should utilize external illumination, which is limited to soft landscape uplighting. The proposal meets these guidelines by utilizing a 48-inch warm light brass uplighting fixture for the sign and a 3-inch warm light brass spotlights, excuse me, for uplighting of the oak tree. Staff recommends that item number three be approved with the following conditions: that the application must meet all the requirements of the city of Franklin prior to issuance of a sign permit, and any additional changes to the approved plans must be returned to the Preservation Planner or the Historic Zoning Commission for review and approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, would you officially introduce yourself and then comment on the application?
I'm Jim Poole. I live in Benelli Park, and Connor Ball, who was the architect, was supposed to be here, but he sent me an email at 4 o'clock, said he had food poisoning, so--
He didn't need to be here.
No. So, thank you for the help. I'd like to especially thank Amanda for, you know, all the help she's given us, kind of getting through all the steps, and, you know, I think Emily summarized it well. I don't really have any other comments.
Okay.
Less their questions.
Thank you. Are there any citizens who wish to comment on this application? Hearing none, we're ready for the commission. Make a motion, someone.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second that with staff conditions if we need to--
Oh, thank you, his staff condition, yes. Okay, Scott's made a discussion. Any discussion?
Maybe I missed something, but I didn't see anything in the application of the details regarding the actual lettering or the plan for the actual lettering part of the wall.
I think he called them out to be 8-inch--
Aluminum letters. They're either--they're cut out, probably cut out aluminum letters.
Individual?
Yeah, they'll be individual, yeah, and then they'll be mounted to the face of the stone.
Okay.
There is an exhibit on the screen, if that's helpful for you. They're individual pen letters, and they'll be mounted with no raceway or any backer.
Originally, we had a limestone backer that was inserted, and the letters were attached to it, but after discussion, we did away with that and just went with attaching the letters to the wall.
And is there a color for the letters?
Yeah, they're gonna be--I think we decided it was gonna be aluminum.
Which would be like--
Silver.
Silver? Dark silver?
Yeah, that--correct.
They would need to be dark enough that they can read against the stone, but as far as the color guidelines go, because the sign is individual letters mounted to a retaining wall, that wouldn't apply.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Ready to vote, then. All in favor of the motion as provided, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Done. Thank you, Jim.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is consideration of new construction accessory at 418 Lewisburg Avenue at Collins Farms. Brian Walker. Amanda, are you--
Yes.
Okay.
I'll be right there. Okay, the applicant is requesting a certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a small 16-by-16 pavilion at Collins Farm, which is a city park off of Lewisburg Avenue. The applicant did appear before the DRC to discuss this proposal a couple of times, once in September and again last month at the December meeting. The city of Franklin has partnered with the local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution to complete certain maintenance needs and improvements at Collins Farm. We're very excited about that. And one of the requests of the DAR in turn is to install a pavilion on the site. The purpose of that pavilion is to provide a shady place for our park visitors and volunteers to sit and rest and to discuss, you know, the topics of the day. The DAR has a very historic preservation-minded mission and would like to use the pavilion to help with talks that they give to folks about their mission and about different historical events in our--that happened in our community and in our country. The pavilion will also serve as organized meeting space for public outreach. So the guidelines recommend that one locate accessory structures to be secondary in prominence to the historic principal structures on the site and in the district. Further, the guidelines state that one should use details to complement but be less elaborate than those types of details that you would see on the historic principles buildings that they serve. Asphalt shingles, fiberglass shingles, 5E metal, standing seam metal are all appropriate roofing materials. If accessory structures lack historically appropriate detailing, such as on prefabricated structures, the guidelines would recommend that they be located so they're not visible from the front facade or the street. The size of the pavilion, as I noted, is 16 by 16 by 11 feet, roughly 11 inches. It is proposed to be constructed of unstained roughson western red cedar, which is partly because the location is in the floodplain and a floodproof wood would be required for construction of anything at that site. The posts are 6 by 6 and measure 7 feet in height and are proposed to be anchored to a concrete pad with post bases. On the drawing, the anchors are shown as black and they're slightly decorative, but at the DRC's request, these anchors will not be used, but instead, the anchors will be used that are shown in the materials provided, the Simpson model. They're not decorative, they're plain galvanized anchors that will not call a lot of attention to themselves. The pavilion will be proposed to be positioned so that its gable end faces away from Lewisburg Avenue. That was intentional. The positioning has been chosen because the pavilion will blend more seamlessly with its surroundings and not call as much attention to itself and away from the historic buildings on the site. Lattice work will also be included in the gable ends, though it's not shown on this drawing here, but that is at the request of the DRC, and the lattice work will, of course, pay homage to an outbuilding that once stood on the site. There is a photograph of that in your application materials. I could certainly pull that up at your request as well. The lattice work will also soften the appearance of the roof support structure and also provide that more traditional detailing. It'll be installed in that same orientation as the lattice work on that part of our building, so it won't be on an angle, it will be up and down, vertical, horizontal, like this. The roof is proposed to consist of an R-panel metal, black in color, again picked so that it blends more seamlessly with the surroundings, at a 612 pitch, have 12-inch overhangs. There'll be no gutters attached to the structure. That concrete pad will extend slightly beyond the drip line of the roof so that it will dissipate the energy of any rainfall, not cause any sort of ground issues with water. This is a city-sponsored item with the DAR, so no recommendation is going to be provided by staff to you, but if issued a COA, the application must meet all the requirements of our Building and Neighborhood Services Department prior to issuance of a permit, and any changes will need to come back to this body or to the Preservation Planner for review and approval prior to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, just introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening. Brian Walker with the Parks Department. Very nice to be in front of you this evening. Amanda was extremely thorough with everything that she described, and so I opened up to any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any citizens who wish to comment on this application? Hearing none, ready for a motion from the commission.
I'll make a motion to recommend the installation of the pavilion at Collins Farm as presented.
Thanks. You're second?
I'm second.
Thank you, Scott. Discussion.
Would Amanda mind pointing out the lattice end so that it can be shown at the Commission meeting?
Absolutely. I will show a photograph of that historic outbuilding. Is that what you're asking? Okay, just a moment.
While she's doing that, I'll just say I'm excited that they responded to the recommendations of the DRC.
I thought I had the--
It's in the photos.
Is that--okay.
So that is a view that shows-- is that-- that's the planned view, excuse me.
It's in the photos.
It's in the photos, okay, yes. That's where it is.
Historic photos. Yeah, all the way down at the bottom of that one.
Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah.
My title threw me off. I put similar structures. So this was a historic building that used to be on the site years ago. You can see the buildings in the background. Lewisburg Avenue would be out this direction, if I'm looking at this correctly. It is a darling photo. Thank you for bringing that to us, Brian, but this is the inspiration for the lattice work that the DRC recommended and the Parks Department wishes to implement.
Any other comments? Ready to vote, then. All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, our next item is consideration of alterations. Porches, stair landings, fountain enclosure, repair, ramp construction, 239 Franklin Road, Hayes House.
Give me just a moment. I accidentally closed my window here by clicking twice instead of clicking once. Is everyone liking Civic Clerk? It's been really cool, huh? I'm still getting used to it myself. Okay. So this is another project you've seen before. to conduct a series of alterations to the Hayes House, which you see on the screen now. At the park at Harland Still Farm off of Franklin Road, proposed alterations include some alterations to the stairs and landings, several secondary entrances. There are a number of secondary entrances to this building. The alterations are proposed for ADA compliance. Alterations to the main porch to better distinguish some of the newer work from the historic configurations. The construction of an ADA ramp at the rear of the building to tie into the parking lot area for inaccessible entrance. In-kind repair to the existing brick paths, and alterations to the parking area through the use of a West Tennessee paving material in lieu of the material that's there now. So this application did come before the Design Review Committee in September, and staff and the consultant have been working very hard based on the feedback that you provided. Again, this is a city-sponsored item, so there will be no recommendation, but I would like to overview the changes and provide information on what the guidelines suggest. So we'll start with the porch landings. As you can see on the screen, there are a number of entrance locations into this building. Obviously, there is the main entrance. There's two on the sides, on the right side, and then two on the left sides. The secondary entrances feature stone or concrete stairs. They each have various states of repair, and the application seeks to repair those landings by removing the stones, building a new concrete substructure, and then replacing those stones in kind at appropriate ADA tread and riser height. So reusing those stones, there are various heights right now, they're tripping hazards, so lay a substrate, use those same stones, pull them back, just set them in the concrete in a way that the rise, the tread and riser heights will be appropriate for ADA. So reusing those stones, which have a lot of age and are very in character with the building, of course. Simple black railing will be installed for accessibility on a couple of the locations, while a simple wood railing would be proposed at the rear addition, which would coordinate with the ramp that I'll discuss here momentarily. The guidelines support the maintenance of historic materials and appearances, and the proposed alterations are conducive to maintaining the historic appearance while also meeting code requirements. The porch stairs are proposed for alteration as well on the front area that you see here. I'll try to zoom in a little bit more for you. Can you see those porch stairs? The application seeks to propose a new wood stair in a style that's more contemporary to the architecture of the building. These stairs were added. They are not historic, nor is the railing. The State Historic Preservation Office has a covenant, a preservation covenant on this property, specifically this building and the main barn, and so staff has been in consult with the State Historic Preservation Office, which would oversee this as well. The state office approves only a very simple design for both sets of the front porch steps and railings. This is a wraparound porch, so there is another set of stairs just immediately on the left side here. Those designs are shown on page A2 of your application. The proposed conditions are in keeping with the Design Guideline recommendations for the use of a simple wood detailing on those porches. Lattice is proposed to enclose the porch foundation as well. So you can see here, it's up your system, you can see that-- So you can see here, it's up here system, you can see the open porch underneath. The lattice is proposed to enclose that while also being very sensitive to recessing behind those piers and leaving those exposed, which is consistent with the recommendations of the guidelines. The application also seeks to paint the nonhistoric brick underneath that porch deck, which is what you see exposed here in this photograph. This is appropriate because the brick is not historic. The Historic Standing Commission guidelines do recommend against painting brick that is historic, so it would be appropriate here. The State Historic Preservation Office has not commented on this aspect, however, so it would need to be brought forward to the state to see if they would recommend approval of painting that brick as well, assuming the commission tonight approves that. Now, moving on to the accessibility ramp, you can see existing conditions, this is the rear corner, this is like the right side and rear, I'm sorry, this is the left side in here. And then I'll scroll down some more for a couple other photos, see left side. It is very dangerous at the moment, and the proposal is to utilize this stair, again, build a new substrate, or a substructure, rather, of concrete, place these steps back in place at appropriate heights, and then have a ramp adjacent to this that wraps around the building and to the rear and right side where accessible entrance will be accommodated on the sun porch. The guidelines support the construction of ramps on rear side facades where they're not readily visible, recommend the use of wood or concrete, and support simple designs to offer reversibility and do not involve the removal of historic features. A simple wood accessibility ramp is proposed here, it would be adjacent to the parking entrance too, which would be very ideal for those who need to access that to be able to park next to it. This is demonstrated by starting the ramp at that rear corner, wrapping around the back, and tying into that rear and right corner. The underside of the addition, when I say addition, this is all addition on the back of the building. This underside right now is exposed, it's completely open, and so it is proposed to enclose that with brick. I'm trying to find that photograph. So you see the photograph, this is the right and rear corner where the ramp will tie in. It is all exposed underneath this sun porch addition that has been enclosed over time. So it is proposed that the area be enclosed with painted brick to better support the structural integrity of that addition and the ramp itself. The proposal is in keeping with the intent of the design guidelines, and this area is not visible from vanages in front of the building or from Franklin Road. For walkways and parking, the plan on the very first page shows the site plan, and you can see there is an existing brick walkway here. This just needs to be cleaned up a little bit, as well as a landing being added. You see that there is no landing here, so the proposal is to have a new brick landing with an herringbone pattern to match the walk and the stone border, similar to this existing walk. It would distinguish the new work from the old. Herringbone landing is also proposed to be added at the base of the stair where the ramp is going to be placed as well. The proposal also includes the repaving of the existing parking area that you can see to the left of the building here in blue. This area is proposed to be paved with a westernist mix, which is the paving material that is at the main drive of Harland Stell, so when you drive into that main south entrance that leads directly to the main barn, that's the surface material on that drive. It's a very soft material, historically typical treatment for that area. The existing stone and brick paths, as I said, will be cleaned up, and then there's a new stone path proposed from the parking area to that front and right side entrance. This is proposed to be made by harvesting existing stone from elsewhere on the site and relocating to this walk. This is appropriate, is a typical pattern that you would see for walkways in historic areas. The proposal is complete. I think I've covered everything. I'd invite our applicant, which is Brandon Pretty from nine oh six studio, to make any comments he would like to have. Again, no recommendation from staff as this is a city-sponsored item. Thank you.
Okay. Please introduce yourself and-
Yes, sir. I'm Brandon Pretty, project architect with nine oh six Studio Architects. Just want to take a moment to thank Amanda for all her help on this as we were working with the, working with the state. Was a good experience. We tried to be very respectful, using a light touch, just to create or to restore this to be a great space that'll last for a long time, be safe, accessible, and be able to serve the city.
And I did fail to mention, the state has approved this proposal. The only thing that's remaining is to talk about painting those brick piers underneath the porch. The state did review the proposal from both interior arrangements and exterior, so we're very confident this would meet the Secretary of Interior standards as it's proposed to you today. Thanks.
Okay. Are there any citizens who wish to comment on the application? Hearing now, we need a motion from the commission.
I'll make the motion to approve with staff comments.
Thank you, Mary. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tyler. All right, discussion, questions?
Mr. Chair, I do have a question regarding the brick. When were the brick piers actually constructed? Do we know the date?
Twenty-ten or more recent than that.
I believe that they were done in tandem with the alterations that were approved by the state for the repair of the queen and gutters, or they might have preceded that actually when the city took ownership of the farm in the mid-two thousands. It was prior to my time here, if I'm remembering correctly, because I probably would have had some comments on that.
But it's been in the twenty-first century.
It's been in the very recent past.
Okay.
Yes.
And of course, and I'm assuming that the reason you want to paint them is so that they, the color would blend more with the stone.
Yes, that is, honestly, we visually want to make them recede a little bit more. Also, with the brick that we'll be adding on the place where we're shoring up that existing porch that's starting to fall in, if we paint it all, then it all looks the same. We don't, certainly don't want to try to match a color there, that'd be tough. Paint makes them look the same and kind of diminishes their visual impact.
So the question then on the stone, do you plan to paint the stone as well?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just had one comment, I guess looking back on the, was it in September that-
Yes, ma'am.
It might have been Mr. Hathaway that mentioned the railing to perhaps mimic the one that's at Fort Granger, and I don't see that depicted, so I was wondering if you've contemplated exactly the specifics of the railing for the ramp.
We have, and Amanda, jump in if I'll kind of, in talking with the state, their preference was just something simple that was, I know with the Granger, there was, with the wire, there was almost, almost like a little modern tint to it. We wanted to stay away from that, stay very traditional, very simple with the wood railing as we've got depicted in the image here.
Yeah, I understand how the metallic part might look a bit contemporary, it's just, it's large, it's very, it's a very large ramp, and I do like how at Fort Granger it kind of fades away, but I understand.
I agree with you.
Yes, the State Historic Preservation Office has the Secretary of Interior standards, which we have developed our guidelines from, they very much are compatible yet differentiated kind of theoretical mindset as well. In this case, because the house is framed and the style is contemporary to the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, it was recommended to go with wood. It would blend, but hopefully not draw as much of attention to itself. At Fort Granger, I think because there are no structures, and the experience is the cultural landscape itself, having those wires for the ramp just helped dissipate all of that, and you see right through and you experience the beauty of which is that cultural landscape. So I do think there's merit to both of them, but in talking through with our consultant and with the state and with the city staff, we just feel that the wood would achieve that in here as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Can you walk me through what the materials, I mean, obviously it's wood frame, but is the deck you walk on going to be stained and all the vertical pieces, handrails painted, if the stain, I mean, what's, what is, do we have a scheme for that, or is it all going to be pressure treated, which I would not love, but I'm just trying, it may say on here, but I don't see it.
So what we're planning is, and honestly, we haven't, you know, we haven't selected a color on things like that. Probably dark paints tend to make things kind of go away. We've talked about like a gray, like a darker gray paint. We've also looked at, you know, we need to do something to it to seal it, to, because I don't, I don't think we want pressure treated either. We haven't made a final decision on what that would be. Again, dark colors tend to go away a little bit visually, so that's, you know, that's what we want to do.
Yeah, I think there's, there is a scheme at the front wraparound porch, isn't it green and white trim basically? Isn't the front porch is painted green?
Steps, yeah.
Okay. Well, that was my only comment, is as foreign as the ramp looks in a drawing, could look even more bizarre if it's a big, even if it's just stained or sealed, you've got this big wood structure on the back of a white house, and the front is painted-
Yeah, we could certainly match what's there, I think that makes a lot of sense.
That would be my preference, is that it kind of ties together in some form or fashion, so that's-
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay.
Is that a condition?
Oh, man.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I move to amend the main motion by adding the words, or adding the condition that the rear ramp and steps match in color scheme to the front porch and steps.
We need a second for that?
Yeah, as soon as I write what he just said.
Sorry.
So I have that the rear ramp must be painted to match the color scheme of the front porch.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Right. So Tyler made that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, all right, Lisa, thank you. Discussion on that amendment.
Is Tyler agreeable with that coming back to, adding that it come back to staff for approval?
I am, and what I would say as a caveat to my own thoughts here, because I'm thinking out loud, I do feel differently about the floor of the ramp is not covered, and it's not going to do that well with paint. If, if the aprons and handrails and things like that, anything that's not horizontal is painted, and the deck is a sealed wood or something, I think I'd be okay with that, because what I don't want it to turn into is that, yeah, they painted it, but it looks terrible, because it can be a really bad maintenance kind of thing over time, so I think as long as the verticals and the apron boards and, you know, rim joists, floor joists, all that, that we can see are painted, and then anything that could hold water on top, I think, be in a sealed wood or something, even if it is pressure treated, I think is perfectly appropriate.
All right, so if I say the rear ramp and steps, vertical pieces only, match the color scheme of the front steps, is that, does that do what you want?
Maybe we should, the motion should just read that they need to work with staff to, to come up with a paint scheme or color scheme for the rear.
Mr. Chair, what my concern was, if they decide that the green paint color isn't exactly what they want, I don't want their hands tied.
No, I agree. There's too much that's gone into this. There's too much.
Yeah.
So shall I rescind my motion and give another? I think you have to have the permission of the second.
Retool it only, yeah, if Lisa agrees, if you want to-
Can I ask something? Are you wanting the ballisters to be like spindles or just straight? Just like straight pieces of wood?
Hadn't even gotten there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't-
We're proposing the straight.
Straight.
I don't mind.
That is the recommendation of the State Historic Preservation Office, that they not be spindles.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good, all right. Do you want to recast your amendment?
Yeah, I think, I think if as long as Lisa's okay, I'm allowed to pull my motion back.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so I'll make another motion.
All right.
So I move to amend the main motion-
All right.
-by creating a condition that the applicant works with staff on the color scheme of the back ramp and stairs.
That is nice and simple, that's good. Lisa, are you agreeable with that one?
Yes.
I'm sorry, everybody.
No, I appreciate it, thank you.
Everybody understand that? Any discussion? All in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Go back to the main motion then, as amended. Any other discussion? So, ready to vote then on that? All in favor of the main motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, just what an exciting project this is that's being taken on.
Yes, we're very excited working with the Friends of Franklin Parks group. We have a group, a number of people here today from Friends, so thank you so much for being here and thank you for partnering with the city on this project.
Okay, we're ready for our next item, consideration of demolition accessory, new construction accessory, and alterations fence and gate at two oh two Second Avenue South. Do we have somebody representing that?
Mr. Pretty is the applicant for the-
Ah, back again.
Ms. Huffer will get the-
Emily's going to do this one. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant appeared before the Design Review Committee to discuss the proposal at its May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, and December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two meetings. The proposal includes the demolition of an existing nonhistoric accessory structure. The guidelines recommend against the demolition of historic buildings or structures if they retain integrity. The existing accessory structure is a circa-two thousands prefabricated structure. As a nonhistoric accessory structure, its removal is consistent with the guidelines. The proposal includes the construction of a new accessory structure. The new accessory building is intended to be situated in the same general area as the existing accessory structure that is proposed for removal. The applicant has adjusted the original design based on feedback from the DRC to better meet the scale and sizing concerns that were expressed. The overall ridge height of the new construction does not exceed the second floor window seals of the principal building. On the north elevation that faces Church Street, the proposal includes, includes a ten-by-ten faux door and faux bifold shutters. Based on feedback from the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two DRC meeting, the applicant adjusted the features of the second frontage from a faux bay of windows to the ten-by-ten faux door, and by adding stone veneer on the foundation of the structure. The guidelines state that facade alterations are important to preserve, especially when they are highly visible from public streets. By adjusting the design of this facade from DRC comments, it addresses the concerns of the commissioners and better meets the intent of the guidelines. On the south elevation- On the south elevation that faces towards the existing fountain and that will not be seen from street view, it will utilize a glass door system. The applicant will repurpose two Gothic stained glass windows to be placed on either side of the door. The stained glass windows will also have storm windows to protect the glass from the elements. While the use of stained glass is not typical to the guidelines, it will be utilized on a facade that is not visible from the public view shed. The east elevation of the new accessory building, which faces the principal building, will utilize a 12-foot by 14-foot wooden arch door. Per the recommendation from the December 19th, 2022 DRC meeting, the dimensions for the arch door were altered. On the west elevation, which faces the rear of the property, an exterior panel door is proposed. This elevation will not be seen from public view. The materials of the new accessory building will utilize painted siding with a four-inch exposure and a dark metal standing seam roof, which are consistent with the guidelines. While the applicant does not state what type of siding will be utilized, the guidelines recommend that new accessory structures will utilize materials and exterior finishes typically used in historic equivalents and to avoid the use of modern siding materials like vinyl or pressed wood. The footprint of the proposed new accessory structure measures 1,012 square feet, which equates to 42% of the footprint of the primary building. The total building coverage measures approximately 20% of the lot, which is consistent with the guidelines. Additionally, the proposal includes addition of a fence and gate. The proposed fence is to be located facing Church Street at the left rear corner of the primary building, connecting to the right corner of the proposed new accessory structure. The applicant plans to use a black metal fence, which is consistent within the guidelines, that state that fences should be compatible with the architectural style of the building and should support the historic character of the district. The use of this type of fencing is appropriate due to the primary building being a high-style federal building. Further, the guidelines state that fences for the rear yard are to be at least 20 feet behind the front facade and are not to exceed seven feet in height. Additionally, the applicant is proposing to have a gate to control access to the site. The proposed gate is an antique metal gate that is 10 feet wide and five feet tall, and will have stone pillars on either side of the gate. The dimensions of the pillars are proposed as being five feet tall, eight, five feet, eight inches tall and two foot wide. The guidelines state that gates should be of a different design, material, or detailing from the associated fence or wall design. While the applicant follows these guidelines, it would be appropriate for the stone of the pillars to be compatible with the stone foundation of the primary building. The applicant is proposing new gates attached to the existing fence at the rear of the property to screen the trash receptacles. It is unclear from the application the dimensions and material of the gates. Because of the proposed location is at the rear of the property, this proposal may qualify for administrative review. Staff recommends that Item 6 be approved with the following conditions: That the siding material must be a cement tissus board or wood rather than vinyl or pressed wood. The stone for the gate pillars must be consistent with the color and context of the stone on the building's foundation. The proposed screening of trash receptacles with the fences unclear and is not approved as part of this application, but it may qualify for an administrative certificate of appropriateness. And the applicant must work with the Assistant Preservation Planner to provide additional information to consider this action. Application must meet all requirements of the City of Franklin prior to issuance of a building permit, and any additional changes to the approved plans must be returned to the Preservation Planner or the Historic Zoning Commission for review and approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Brandon?
Again, I would like to thank staff and the board for your assistance and recommendations during the DRC. That was helpful. And our owner regrets he can't be here. He's on vacation, but I'll pass along his thanks as well. We've appreciated all the help in the process, and I think we've come to a good place.
Okay, good. Are there any citizens which comment on this application? Hearing none, need a motion from the commission? Someone?
I'll move to approve with staff comments and those outlined this evening.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, questions, comments?
Is the stake that I drove by earlier, it looked like there was a stake with a pink flag? Is that where you all staked where the proposed structure is going to be, close to the road? I know we talked about that.
I believe that's a survey. I didn't put that stake in. I think that's a survey. Now they.
Property line?
Yes, I think that's right. We did include, to that point, we had an exhibit that we included to kind of show the relationship.
Yeah, I saw that. I just didn't know. When I drove by and saw that, I didn't know if that was.
Brent, talk about the fencing. I'm not clear on where the fence goes that you're proposing.
So we've got, there's a couple pieces. There's, are you referring to the stone piece on the front or the fencing on the back?
Wherever you've got fencing. I don't, it's probably not that dashed line that runs along Church Street.
No, sir. No, that's the property line. We've got, there's a white line you can see that'll be metal fencing.
Okay, all right, right there.
Yes, and those will be the two little images you see above that.
Right, okay.
And then the gate, we've got stone pillars and the gate, and then another piece of decorative metal fence.
That ties into the back of the main structure, the primary building.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, I'm with it now.
And there's another small piece.
In the back for the trash.
Yes, and that'll just match the existing, you know, height, paint to match.
That's fine, okay. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I'm not clear. Does the dark color of the roofing material come back to staff?
It's proposed to be a bronze or black, is that correct?
Yeah, like a dark bronze color.
And that can come back to staff if that's.
It will come back to staff?
Yes.
Okay, and then the details of the doors on the facing Church Street side, are those doors going to come back to staff for comment?
If that's a condition that.
I would like to make that a condition.
Facing church?
Yes.
On the south, wait a minute, on the south side?
Church Street, Church Street side, south elevation.
The faux doors, right.
All right, south elevation, that's.
Yeah, it's drawn, and that could be done a hundred different ways, so.
So that's south elevation doors and the roofing color? Is that your condition or amendment proposal?
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Thank you. That's an amendment.
Yeah, right.
Okay, any other, any other comments on that recommended amendment?
Not, not on that. Something else.
Okay, well, hold that thought.
Okay.
All right, all in favor of Mary's amendment then, for the south, on the south elevation, for the doors and the roofing color to come back to staff for approval? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next, Lisa.
So a couple of questions. Compared to the footprint from the original application, are we looking at something considerably smaller here?
So the footprint is not smaller, but the scale is significantly smaller. The previous, there's three DRC meetings this attended. And Emily, I'm sorry, I jumped in here. She wasn't, she wasn't here for some of those meetings. And so the scale was originally a very tall, one and a half or two-story scale. The applicant has worked with his client, the owner, and brought that down to a scale that is supported by the zoning ordinance and the design guidelines and a footprint that is as well. This has come a very long way, and I know Kelly's not here to hear this, but I wouldn't commend him. He's done a really good job hearing the DRC comments and trying to implement those into the plan that you see today.
I do recall from the original application that there were renderings of how this building would look next to the original historic building, which I found really helpful in our analysis. But there's nothing like that in.
We've got a view on, I believe it's the page after this, that shows it's an elevation view. That scale-wise, you can kind of see how they compare, if that helps.
Yes, that helps. Another thing that helps is on that particular exhibit, the opening and closing gate with the stone columns would be right there in that middle gap? Is that where it would be?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The, this drawing is not situating the buildings, the distance that they truly are from each other. So there will be much more space between these buildings in actuality. And yes, the metal gate and columns are proposed to go between the two.
I just don't see anything consistent with that gate in the area, you know? Can you point to?
There is a, there's an existing stone gate into, Amanda, can you go back to the site plan really quickly? There we go. So if you can see where we've got written bench and wall, that's the space between the gravel parking lot and the little courtyard they've got. There is an existing stone gate or a stone wall and a little gate piece there.
Decorative, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Decorative.
Yeah, there might be an image of that in the images.
Here's the image of the proposed metal gate to be used. You see, they actually have that right now. And then there's images here that show the courtyard.
Bottom, bottom-left image, you can kind of on end, you can see that existing little stone wall piece.
So if you have this pulled up on Civic Clerk, you can pull up the plan set. It's page two.
Oh, and there's a straight, sorry, there's a straight-on view to the, two images over, to the right of that. Yeah, right there.
Which, how would the height of that differ from the height that you're proposing?
What we're proposing is a little bit taller than that. It's.
The proposal's five feet, four inches with the cap included.
So maybe, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head with that. Maybe it's a, I don't even know if it's a foot taller than what's there now.
It looks about four feet to me, what I'm seeing in this photograph.
Sounds about right.
I will say, this is my last comment regarding the gate, is that Ms. Pierce has taught me to be very cognizant of stone and how it can differ and how in the application it looks like you're going to try to not match it exactly, right? Because it's not going to be historic, it's not going to be old stone.
That's right. We want something complimentary. I don't, you know, we're not going to try to match what's there. That's not what the, that's not in keeping with the guidelines, but we do want something that's complimentary, that's, you know, within the same palette, same kind of style, same treatment. But you'll be able to clearly differentiate that between the existing gate.
And my last question, maybe. The, the, part of the fence is historic wrought iron, correct?
Part of the proposed fence?
Part of the proposed fence.
Yes, it's a, yes.
Historic material.
Yes, that's a piece they've got. That's that image you see in the upper right-hand corner?
But not the gate?
That is the gate.
That will be the gate.
Oh, that would be the gate, okay. That would be the material for the gate would be.
That's it, yes, ma'am.
Old wrought iron, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Understood. Okay, well, if I could offer up an amendment asking that the stone be reviewed by staff?
Is that it? Is that it? Is there a second to Lisa's amendment?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of Lisa's amendment, that the stone be reviewed by staff? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back to the main motion then as amended. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I do have discussion. Having due on Church Street, on the Church Street side, we have the faux shutters. And if I use your scale correctly, so past the actual faux garage door to the corner board, and then from that corner board to the next corner board that ends the actual outbuilding, that's about 14 feet. And then the window appears to be the size of it about four feet wide, which is a faux, just shutters. There's not really a window there. And on an outbuilding like this, I would, I would expect it to see either one or two windows, and the sash is not being any wider, just the sash, and 26 to 28 inches. So I'm concerned that because it's the Church Street side, it's what's being seen, that it's larger than what's on the house. And then the greenhouse that's across the street as well, that to harmonize better with the neighborhood and the house, those windows should either have just one and be reduced in width, or two smaller windows in that location.
Yeah, I mean, the design decision, you know, to put what was there was really just based on trying to keep something simple. I understand your logic completely, and if we wanted to create two smaller, two smaller kind of faux shutter pieces that were just single shutters as opposed to one, I think that would look great.
But your single shutters would be two that close.
Yeah, that's right.
Look close.
Yeah.
It'd just be a narrower window.
Yeah.
Okay, what's your amendment then? Number three.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
I move that the windows, that the window or windows on the Church Street side that are faux, the faux shutters, let's call them faux shutters, be reduced in width. So, so that the sash appearance would be anywhere from 26 to 28 inches.
Okay.
You said 26 to 28?
26 to 28.
26 to 28.
That does include the trim, the trim boards. Just where the faux, how your shutters.
Yeah, the shutter width.
What did you say it is now?
Four feet.
Okay, so, okay, from 48, cut it down from 48 to 26 to 28, all right. All right, is there a second to Brian's amendment?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Susan. Any further discussion on that amendment? All in favor of that one, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, are we ready for the main motion as amended three times?
I do want to make one slight clarification. I think I misspoke earlier. There was a motion made by Ms. Pierce that the south elevation doors facing church, as you can see on the screen here, the north elevation faces church. And so the motion did say south, it also said Church Street. So I just want to acknowledge that we will recognize that as the north elevation facing Church Street.
Wait a minute, now you confused me. What's?
It was brought to my attention by one of the citizens in the audience that.
It's a view from Church Street.
We said south instead of north. But we will, we will have that motion reflect Church Street.
I was thinking the right elevation, but I was.
Yeah, we all were, we just, I just misspoke.
Okay, we're ready to vote then on the main motion as amended three times. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And again, Mr. Harwood's to be commended, it's come a long way.
Yes, it has come a whole long.
Thank you.
A long, long way. All right, we're ready for the next one. Consideration of alterations, refuge area locations and screening at 2:30 Franklin Road.
Mr. Chair, I would, if I could, just say something for the record?
Oh, yes, please.
Yes, as you know, given the potential for a conflict in the past, I have declined to participate in this matter previously. Now that that potential for a conflict no longer exists, I am able to participate and will do so in a fair and unbiased manner.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Do we have someone here to represent this item?
Yeah, oh, yeah, they're here.
Okay, great. All right, this will be Ms. Huffer.
Familiar faces. Okay, Emily?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant applied for a modification of standards to the zoning ordinance for the location of the refuge areas as the zoning ordinance does not allow for placement in front of buildings. The Board of Mayor and Alderman approved. The Board of Mayor and Alderman approved a modification of standards for the proposal on October 25th, 2022. Due to the property's location within the historic preservation overlay, however, the design guidelines still apply and the applicant is seeking a certificate of appropriateness for the location and screening. The applicant appeared before the Design Review Committee to discuss the proposal at its November 21st, 2022, and December 19th, 2022 meetings. Additionally, the applicant has requested to defer the proposal from the December 12th, 2022 historic zoning meeting to today's meeting. The proposal includes the addition of two refuse areas for the factory at Franklin that will be located between the buildings and Liberty Pike. The proposed screening is to measure 31 feet, eight inches in length, and 11 feet, eight inches in width, and to be eight feet in height, and consists of masonry walls with a stained cedar gate to access the trash receptacles and compactors. The guidelines are not intended to be a comprehensive document that covers all zoning requests such as the placement of refuse areas, but the guidelines do note that site and setting alterations should not be undertaken in locations that are visible from the public view and distract from or overwhelm the context of historic districts. The guidelines also note that fences and walls should measure no more than three feet in front yards as principal buildings and front yards are more visible from public view sheds. With these guidelines in consideration, the refuse location and requisite screening at the Liberty Pike locations are not recommended. During the December 19th, 2022 DRC meeting, the DRC requested that the applicant provide alternative locations further away from the street for consideration. Additional locations were not provided for consideration. Therefore, staff recommends that Item 7 be denied based on staff analysis and recommendation dated January 9th, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant please come forward?
Hello, my name is Greg Gamble and I'm representing Holiday Properties in this request for your certificate of appropriateness tonight. I'm here tonight with Benton Smothers from Holiday. If you have any operational maintenance questions, he's happy to answer those as well. We want to first say we appreciate the opportunity that you gave us to come back to the DRC to discuss this further. We really want to try and build consensus as best we can. We did go back and analyze the parking lot, the drainage, the storm infrastructure, the truck turning movements, the pedestrian safety, landscape screening, and we truly believe that we have the best plan. In addition to the physical location and the design that we have, it's also the best plan as it relates to the businesses that are within the factory. I did hear some comparisons with Main Street and we went back and analyzed our design and relationship to a lot of the buildings that are on Main Street. What's interesting is the distance from the farmer's market area to Mafiosus is approximately, within about 10 to 15 feet, the same distance from Third Avenue to Fifth. And within that distance of Main Street, back of house, there are about 47 locations that are dumpsters or trash container areas. Each business has its own. This is completely different. We have four areas for refuse, for trash at the factory. All of them will be maintained and operated by Holiday Properties, one single entity. Each one will have a washout area. Each one will have connections back to the infrastructure within the parking lot of the factory. They can control and maintain when the trash is picked up. We designed it in such a way where we feel confident that there will only be one pickup a day. Unless there's some special event, maybe Pilgrimage Festival, we may have to have additional trash pickups. But this is truly intended to be a very well-managed operation. With that, I'll ask Benton if you have anything else that you wanted to add for that. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have. I wouldn't like to point out, though, briefly, this plan as presented to you tonight does align with the modification of standards that is incorporated into the development plan that was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission and unanimously approved by the Board and Mayor and Alderman. So it is currently consistent with those plans that were approved and that modification of standards approved by the Board. But again, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any citizens which comment on this application? Hearing none, we need a motion from the...
I'd like to...
I'm sorry. If you'd come and introduce yourself and, I don't have a speaker card, but introduce yourself and make your comments.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Andy Blair at 533 Plantation Court, Nashville, Tennessee. I rise in support of this proposal. I know that with the current modification of standards looking forward, it's not best to have refuse areas along major streets or in the front of buildings. I've always, can, personal connection to this site with the factory was my great-great-grandfather's stove factory, or great-grandfather's stove factory. And so this is a very important site to me and I'd like to see it continue to be utilized as best possible way for the future. I think that Holiday Properties is the best stewards of the factory since Calvin Leahue saved it from, and starting it back in the 1990s. So I know along Liberty Pike, it's kind of becoming a new center for and with development across the street proposed. It's trying to hide them and screen them as best as possible would be, is my wish. I know there's over 30-foot-tall magnolia trees. I'd like to hopefully see them screened against those trees and so that it doesn't, you can't hardly see it as badly from Liberty Pike or from Franklin Road itself. But I see that trying to find another location is pretty difficult except if you're putting it in the very back of the factory, which is not accessible really for the restaurants or also for the size of the site. And as far as it can be screened, and I think that Holiday has done a great job in efforts to screen them and to cover them and trying to keep them closed and maintained, I think is the best possible usage, whether that be remote doors or however they can be kept, the doors closed so that the trash is only operated by people within the businesses inside the factory. But also those trucks that are coming to pick them up would be greatly appreciated and hopefully that are approved tonight with conditions from staff as well as from the Board of Mayor of Alderman. I know it's tight with the parking lot. I don't know as far as the trucks coming to pick them up and where it actually would be seen, I think would be helpful for me from either Google Street Views or kind of comparison to the magnolia trees and trees on the site to where it would be as you go along Liberty Pike. So thank you all for letting me speak tonight and look forward to hearing your recommendations.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens which should comment on the application? Hearing none, we need a motion from the commission.
I recommend approval of the motion.
I second that.
Thank you, Scott Antower. Discussion?
I thought that you said there would be four refuse areas?
There are. There are two here along Liberty and there are also two that are along the northern property line. So there are a total of, yeah, two along the northern property line there. Where we're moving the Carousel Building to, we're really working with the Holiday to create a four-sided architecture, four-sided building. This area back where the Carousel is being proposed has always been kind of back of house, but going forward, it really won't be. It'll have just as much kind of commercial presence as other areas of the factory.
Well, back of house, that terminology you just used, would you call this back of house in any way? Or you're showing the refuse?
They're on the sides of the building. I really think of the building as fronting and facing Franklin Road. However, the way in which our ordinance and I think the design guidelines is set up, it recognizes any street frontage as the front.
And the other areas that you had considered were just impractical for the business? Or explain why the other areas you considered did not work?
Yeah. Benton Smothers with Holiday Properties. It's really about travel distance. And if you look at the plan and, you know, numbers 11, 12, 11, 13, and 14, those are all restaurants. And so the proximity to those, if we were to put the dumpsters all in the back, just the travel distance, you would have to cut through the improved interior, which we really want to avoid because then we can't really control that. But the shortest distances and keeping them in areas that are just convenient for those restaurants.
And it really did put it into perspective for me to the length of the factory. So from that building that's on the far right to Mafiosus on the far left, that distance is the same as Third Avenue to Fifth. Two blocks of downtown. And so when you think about someone like Starbucks having to take their trash all the way to the Roundabout, it's not very practical. And so we're looking for practical solutions that allow those businesses to operate and for Holiday to maintain those at a very clean and high level.
So one anecdote too over the Holiday. So we have a bar that, you know, we've licensed and we've been having, you know, kind of mobile bar kind of stuff in the grand hall. So on our opening night, everyone's milling around, enjoying the drinks and festivities right in front of our Christmas tree and the dumpsters are all in the back, right? So a, one of our businesses, you know, they were closing and they had a high school age, you know, employee that took the trash right through, right? And so that's the kind of, that's the kind of moment we're trying to avoid. And, but the other, the other piece is every time we talk with restaurateurs, you know, once we kind of get through those kind of high-level terms, they like the space, they want to be here, all that stuff. One of the very first questions is, well, where do I take the trash out? Where's, where's that kind of stuff? And in particular, that's the, the Water Tower Restaurant is one in particular that has come up and it's, it's a real problem if they have to go all the way to the back.
Yeah, I understand. And then this is my last question. How many containers are in each one of those locations?
So each of those two, there are, there are three in each.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and they will be closed throughout the day. Again, they're controlled by us. So we have onsite maintenance and porters that will be keeping this all clean, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a procedural or point of clarification. So we had a modification of the...
Modification of standards.
Standards by the BOMA in October, recommended by Planning Commission. And that, did that come before this board prior to that recommendation?
I'm happy to speak to that. So the, the development plan was amended for this project. And it did include, we did as a historic zoning commission offer a recommendation to the FMPC and BOMA about all the modifications to standards, including this one. And for some, some background, because I know this has been a while, the commission did provide guidance via recommendation on the proposed modifications for signage and other similar requests. In this particular one, there were six members present that night and we could not arrive at a recommendation. The vote was 3-3. So we moved forward with a no recommendation from this commission.
So I guess, I guess where I'm just asking the point of clarification, BOMA's already said that they, that these can go.
Yeah, but it's come back to us, I think.
And it's coming, and the authority is on a design review. Not, is it whether it can go or is it the design of it? I guess is my question.
It's the, the refuse location and screening. So the Board of Mayor and Alderman did approve a modification because the zoning ordinance explicitly said this could not be done.
Right.
The design guidelines do still apply in addition to the zoning ordinance and it applies not only for location but screening mechanism as well.
So it's back to us for a final approval?
But Mr. Denton, I think his question is, is it just about the type of screening or is it location and it's both?
It's both, yeah.
It's both.
But the BOMA said it can go on Liberty Pike?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's, that was just my question. It's our procedure, that's...
Mr. Chair, I have a big problem with this. 30 feet is very long. If I were going to try to live with it, I would at least want to see a dumpster come out of each one of those. I just happened today to hear a dumpster being unloaded. It's, to me, not in keeping with the main roads of Franklin to have dumpsters fronting them. I think I could have a little, and do I care about the factory? Oh, yes. At one point, it was going to be torn down. I was at the Heritage Foundation. We did a huge community project called Catch the Vision and were able to build momentum to save the factory. So I care, I deeply appreciate what you all are doing, Holiday and Properties. Went to enjoy the Christmas tree, I love it. But it just makes me shake inside. I think if it could at least be smaller and each of them have two dumpsters, if I'm going to do something that goes against every fiber in my body, if it weren't 30 feet long, do you all understand how long that is?
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Susan?
I have to agree with Ms. Pierce. I cannot support this motion. I've lost some sleep over this, quite frankly. And feel like it's, you know, I realize, I appreciate that you've gone to great lengths to try to figure out a better place to do this. And in my heart of hearts, I just don't feel like this is really what we need to do. So I can't support the motion.
All right, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may inter here. Commissioner Pierce, where were you when you heard those dumpsters being dumped? As a person, where were you when those dumpsters being dumped?
Downtown.
Downtown, they were not at the factory, right?
They were not at the factory.
Right. The factory, the factory is a very unique piece of property.
I agree.
That the Board of Mayor and Alderman are getting ready to propose a new factory district to protect this type of entity we have in the city of Franklin. And I think that to help this entity, which is such a great factor for the city of Franklin, we need to approve this so this thing can be successful and continue to bring the tourist dollars, the white dollars that we need to come into this, in this community. And so I will support this.
Okay, other comments?
Mr. Chair, as a commissioner, the first thing I do when an applicant comes before us with a proposal is compare it to our guidelines. And I think our discussion needs to come back to our guidelines. And our guidelines are very specific about view sheds. And that's why staff is recommending denial because of the dumpster, the eight-foot walls by 11 by 30 enclosures, which make about 373 square feet. So Franklin Road, we would say, is a major thoroughfare. And in times past, we may have called Liberty Pike a secondary street. But today, the majority of the factory can be seen from Liberty Pike. And Liberty Pike has now become more than a side street, it's a major thoroughfare. So we see a lot of traffic that runs from Mack Hatcher to Franklin Road. Now we have the factory activating that corner and we have across the street a multifamily complex that will go in. And these dumpsters, it's what they are, they're dumpsters, will sit right across the street from the multifamily complex. And, and I think the guidelines are correct in protecting the view shed of the factory along Liberty Pike. And that's why I can't support the dumpsters either.
If I may, again, Commissioner Lassiter, they're providing, proposing to provide accurate screening on this project. And if the Board of Mayor and Alderman put this special zoning in place to preserve this factory, which if the factory got torn down, that'd be a great loss to the city of Franklin. Something like this could make or deal that project. Just because you've got, we've got, they've already announced two new restaurants here recently. And the accessibility to dispose of their waste at a reasonable time is very crucial for any restaurant to survive. And so it's, it's, the factory's had two or three owners who have not been able to make it survive. Here we have a group of people who are putting forth the money to make it survive, protect the Water Tower, and move forward with this. And I think that the dumpsters can be hidden with the foliage or with solid walls and it would not be a sound issue. I don't think, I don't think the dumpsters in Jameson Station are an issue to the residents... I don't think, I don't think the dumpsters in Jameson Station are an issue to the residents that live there. I've never heard of any complaints there. And this is be on a public site, not a private site. So I still stand behind what I'm saying, the dumpsters, I think they should be allowed to help with the viability of the Franklin for not just now, but for the future.
So Mr. Chair, one other comment I'd like to make and that's be grateful to BOMA because BOMA sent it back to the Historic Zoning Commission to make the final approval. And the second is where the dumpsters are proposed to be located is a simple solution. The, the solution is going to be more complex, but if it is denied tonight, Holiday Properties will find a solution for, for the trash, for the restaurants.
The other comment, Mr. Chair, that I thought of after the presentation of having the whole factory district, there will be more elevations that look down on these. So just want to say that.
Yeah, I, I've thought about this a lot and I, I think, just as Mr. Laster said, I mean, we go to the guidelines first and foremost. But I also realize that if we were always considering things that just went strictly with the guidelines, that we would need to be here because we have guidelines. That'd just be it, that'd be it. And this site, as Mr. Harrison said, is just a different place. There, there really is a whole bunch of fronts and a whole bunch of backs. And that's what makes it unique is that, and there's no real way through the building without going through the building, if that makes sense. There's no pathways to get from Liberty Pike side to the back without going through other leased space, even if it's bars and hallways and things, those are functional space or walking around. So it, it, it makes it difficult to consider this as just like we would consider any kind of commercial space downtown because it's, it doesn't fall into any of those categories in any way. It doesn't fit the, the mold and that. So, and then, you know, Mr. Gamble brought up was there's a lot more that goes into this other than, well, we picked a spot that was close enough. If you look at the design of like the driveways and such, they have, have created loops and shifted parking and all these things to be able to get here to this place and this location. And, and would I love to not have trash there? Well, of course. I'd love to not have trash in my house, but that's just not, we all have it. And considering all the movement that they've made to make this happen and could they be smaller? Maybe they could be smaller, but then would we end up with three instead of two? And then would they have to adjust the drive aisles to accommodate three, which takes more parking away? There's so much more tied up in this than just, we picked a spot. And so, you know, I, I really think they've done as good as anybody could do. And we asked them to explore other options and I believe they have. They've even gone through what was not a cheap process of design and some of the work has started to accommodate these locations. This wasn't, if there was an easier, cheaper way to do this, I think they would have done it. So for that reason, I support what they've done. I don't love the trash there. Nobody does, but I think it's necessary. And I think they've done as good as anybody could have done with picking a location.
And I will, I'm going to be consistent in what I've said all along. I support this location and what they have done, which is over and above, I think, what anyone could expect to cover dumpsters. And whether it's two or three, obviously they wouldn't have three in each one if they didn't think that was needed. So that's, I don't have any problem. I think the way they've got this thing constructed and seen, and I think you'll be looking slightly down on it from the grade in Liberty Pike. And I have no problem with doing this. This is a large and unique property. You've heard this over and over and over and it is. And I think the, it's a very practical, although expensive, solution to try to accommodate all concern. So I, I have no problem at all in supporting this request.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I just would say the two most compelling pieces to me are Page Four and pay it this, and in particular, the top image of Page Four of the submission because it should, well, and I agree with Ms. Pierce, 30 feet's a long way, but when you look at it in the context, up one more, if you, for the, yes, the very top. You look at the full spans of that and it's, and these are brick walls. And then the one that's the most compelling to me is Page Six, which shows the cross-section on Liberty Pike. And you see that gentleman and his little kiddo or the family and their little kiddo standing where those are pulled down off the grade. I just think the, from, from what, that's why I was asking the quest, clarification on the modification of standard. If BOMA's already said they can have it on Liberty Pike, then I'm looking at what, how are we on screening? And I feel like if you've got brick walls, and I know we're not supposed to consider landscaping, but you look at the grade there and then the overall length of the factory and how, how that factors in, I, I feel, I feel, again, nobody wants trash anywhere. I don't want the raccoons to get in my trash cans, but they do. And so, yeah, I, I think that that is a good job done as far as the, the design and, and trying to screen that since it's been, already been decided it, it can go on Lewisburg or on Liberty Pike.
All right, any other discussion on this?
I have a question for the applicant. If, if what Ms. Pierce proposed regarding diminishing the size, to have two containers in each space and then perhaps three or four years from now, based on the needs and the priorities of the businesses there, you realize, okay, the two containers just is not sufficient, then why at that point, wouldn't you be able to come back and propose something to this scale?
You mean start with two and then go to three later?
Yes.
Well, I, it's, well, first of all, I think that this is what we need. We've, we've, we have a consultant, we have a trash consultant, refuse consultant who's put this together. And so all of these locations and the dimensions, we know exactly what we need in each one of those bays, the size, the spec and all that stuff, based on the square footage of the existing property and the uses that we envision that are entitled to go there. So I think that we're gonna need them. And the question, if we were to start with two and go to three, I think a lot of it has to do with the layout. I mean, this was brought up and it really is true. Getting that configuration, I mean, that's why you have some, one that's angled, but one that's in a specific spot, it's all about how do you, how do you get to it, how it's picked. I mean, obviously the proximity is, is the most important thing, but, so it's a little bit, it's a little bit trickier to just, you know, what, what do you gain from going from two and three? And I just, but the, the, the main focus is I think we'll need them, so.
Yeah, I understand. I just thought that, that what Ms. Pierce was referring to is actually a good middle ground for those of us who, who have misgivings about these large structures.
What, yeah, and what in practice, what would probably happen is there is, there's a lot of expense in putting this together and the design, going through this whole process. This is, this is time consuming and it takes, you know, consultants and, and a lot of effort, right? So the likelihood is it's more likely that we might have two, but we have more picks, right? We might not want to go back through the whole process or redesign or try to figure out how to build something new. It's probably going to be an operations standpoint, operations at that point. And then you just get more picks throughout the day, which is what we wanted to avoid. So part of this was controlling the picks to limit the number of times that a dump, a garbage truck drives through the site. And ideally having control over when that time is so that it's at an off time. But this is designed based on having one, one pick a day. That was, that was a very important factor for us, so.
Good point. All right, any other comments? You're ready to vote then. Let's do this by raising your hand. So all in favor of the motion to approve, please raise your hand. We've got Josh, Tyler, Kathy and Scott and me. All opposed, raise your hand. Okay, five-four. Susan, Brian, did you get that, Amanda?
Yes.
Susan, Brian, Lisa and Mary.
Yes.
All right, the motion then passes. Okay, thank you. All right, we're ready for Mary.
Mr. Chair, I've got to leave. Excuse me.
All right, next item is consideration of alterations. Roofing on principal building and previously approved roofing on accessory structure at 215 Lewisburg Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Give me just a moment.
No timeouts.
I'll allow Ms. Pierce to step down. Okay, so the purpose of this proposal is to consider two different items. The applicant is proposing that the roofing material on the existing accessory structure, which you see in the photograph here, be allowed to be maintained. And then the second proposal involves the roofing material on the principal building. So again, the first proposal proposes roofing material alterations to the previously approved accessory structure is the garage behind the building. The accessory structure was approved with asphalt shingle roofing on the main form and with a standing seam metal roof on the dormer by the Historic Zoning Commission in April of last year. The software quarter was placed on the accessory structure in November this year because as you can see, a standing seam metal roof was added in lieu of the, or in contrast to the approved plan. The applicant did submit a certificate of appropriateness application for consideration by the commission at its December meeting last month for this roofing material. That roofing request was denied by the commission. The second proposal involves the removal of the asphalt shingle roofing on the main house and its replacement with cedar shake roofing. That was also brought forward to the commission for consideration at its December meeting, but the Historic Zoning Commission did choose to defer that review to this meeting as there was insufficient information provided by the applicant to make determination of the proposal's appropriateness. So we'll start with the accessory structure. I brought up this photo so you could see the roofing. This photo was supplied by the applicant. The accessory structure guidelines state that one should locate, excuse me, accessory structures to be secondary in prominence to the principal building on the site. And that one should use materials and exterior finishes that are typically used in historical equivalents. Details should complement, but be less elaborate than the character of the principal historic buildings. So asphalt shingle, fiberglass shingle, 5B metal roof, standing seam metal roof are all appropriate roofing materials depending on context. Certain for alterations to existing nonhistoric buildings like this one. The guidelines refer to Chapter Two, which states that one should use materials and finishes with a character compatible with those used historically and with proven durability. Details should be designed to minimize impacts to the historic district. In this case, the use of metal is not an issue specifically. It was not approved by the commission because it was not requested by the applicant at the time last year. But the use of metal as proposed today is appropriate. The inherent color of the roofing material is more elaborate than the color of the material on the principal building, however, and therefore draws more emphasis to and more visual prominence to that accessory structure, which is contrary to the guidelines, which recommend that new buildings be secondary in prominence to the historic ones they serve. Further, because the accessory structure was constructed in a manner that did not match the specifications of the original building permit, which staff worked on with the Historic Zoning Commission in an effort to mitigate that height as best as possible, the accessory structure is more prominent than intended originally. Color and finish, when inherent to a material, can be very impactful to the historic district. For example, think of brick. The commission commonly reviews brick as a, an appropriate historic material, but the color inherent to it's very important for compatibility in a district. We have lots of orange tones in 70s brick, for example. When you approve a building as being brick, you're not thinking of that tone. You're thinking of a tone that's more in the reds and browns and what you would see in keeping with the historic downtown area. In this case, it appears that the metal color was installed to be chosen to emulate the color and, and high sheen of a copper metal. Copper is not likely to be supported on an accessory structure because historically it is an expensive, high-styled material. And the guidelines state that accessory buildings should be designed more simply, as is covered earlier. Further, copper roofing weathers to a patina finish, which is, you know, very, very unique to copper. We've all seen copper roofing, the building across the street was a previous application tonight. A 202 Second Avenue South has a copper roof. It's a very dark color now. Will all be long gone before it's patinas to the color that you see, kind of a greenish patina that you associate with copper, but it will do that nonetheless. The, the material that's on, installed on the building now, it's not copper. It's not clear if that high sheen will fade. And because it is not copper, it will not patina. Without knowing more about it, it's not clear if that sheen will go away. Thus, the use of the installed metal roofing may be appropriate if it can be painted to be a muted color and subdued so that it's more in keeping with the guidelines. Staff did work with the applicant pretty thoroughly in, in preparing for this meeting, recommended that the applicant provide a physical sample in the requested color for the commission's consideration because paint commonly fades and peels. And if the proposed color is not inherent to the material itself, it's important to understand how that paint color and treatment's proposed to be added on to that material and maintained to meet the intent of the guidelines. The applicant included information on the prevalence of the use of metal roofing in the districts and the guidelines do not contest this. Metal is an appropriate roofing material in the districts depending on the context in which it's situated. The application also includes photographs of various copper color and, or copper material, rather, metal roofs, actual copper metal, not just metal that's colored copper. Wood shingle roofs, dimensional asphalt shingle roofs with muted red and orange tones. The applicant also submitted, also submitted a sheet of potential paint colors, which I will scroll down to now, for the commission's consideration, should the Historic Zoning Commission opt to allow for painting the existing metal. The paint choice is shown here. It's a Sherwin-Williams Pro-Industrial Water-Based Alkyl Eurythene. Research does indicate that that urethane is appropriate for the use on exterior applications and metal applications. So to summarize, metal is an appropriate material on this structure and would be supported by staff. The color inherent to it, however, is not in keeping with the intent of the guidelines. So it would be recommended that the commission consider a paint color to change the color of the existing roof, but allow that material to remain. And moving on to the principal building, I'm going to scroll back up here. The applicant's proposing to remove the asphalt shingle roofing on the house and to replace it with cedar shake roofing. The guidelines state that roof materials contribute to the building's style and character and recommend retaining that historic roofing material and refraining from altering it if, if it's on highly visible elevations. The guidelines also recommend that if partial or wholesale replacements needed, that one uses materials whose composition and appearance match the historic materials. So at the last meeting, there were some photographs provided. It was really unclear what, at least in, in staff's opinion, what I was looking at. Sounds like the commission agreed, so the item was deferred to this evening. At the Historic Zoning Commission's request, the applicant has provided additional information to support their proposal, including photographs of the roofing, photographs of wood shingles proposed for use. And I believe there's some samples here that we are able to pass around if you'd like. Staff did visit the site on April fifteenth, I'm sorry, December fifteenth. Staff did visit the site on April fifteenth, I'm sorry, December 15th, to investigate that roofing material. There is an enclosed back porch addition on the building that was added to the original building. And under that shed roof, there is evidence of a previous green shingle. And then the starting run of that roof along the edge has some wood shakes underneath that green shingle. Mr. Tosh did visit the site, and he took the photographs that are in the item report that are included here today. So if you have any questions about how that analysis was made, Mr. Tosh is happy to explain that. But from this investigation, staff finds that the building had wood shakes applied to it at some point in its history. I can't tell you when, I'm not really sure. But it's clear that there was wood shakes and then a green shingle and now the shingle that you see today. So with that, it is recommended that Item Eight be approved with the following conditions, that the metal roofing on the garage be maintained, but be painted a muted subdued color to meet the intent of the guidelines. The Historic Sending Commission shall select a color with a non-gloss finish and of a muted subdued color. And I will add that the applicant, since this was provided, did provide some paint chips that I'm happy to share with you. I'm going to project them, and then we'll pass these around. They would like the color to be approved as it currently is, which is the kind of orangey color. But if the commission is so inclined, it's asking that you select one of these four colors that it would be happy, or the applicant would be happy to use to paint the existing roof. The applicant also indicated that there is an addition that has been approved on the house, and they would use whatever color the commission approves for the garage on the addition for the house as well. Further conditions, the staff recommends that the color and sheen of the metal selected for the addition be consistent with that on the garage. So that would be a condition of approval as well, that this meet all the requirements of the city prior to building permit or commencing, and any changes come forward to staff for the commission for review and approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would the applicant please come forward and introduce yourself?
I'm Julie Alfrey, 215 Lewisburg Pike. And thank you, Amanda, and everyone for coming. Randy, Emily, appreciate their help. They've been very, very helpful. Couple things that Amanda covered, which I think are very important. Number one, we started out with the height of the roof of the garage, which was our first foray in here. And part of the reason for that was, when we had the roof of the garage approved, then we had a little bit of suggestion from our neighbor, who you'll hear from, about moving it, instead of it being so far back, moving it forward, which we were happy to do. Unfortunately, when we moved it forward, the elevation was higher in that area.
We're familiar with all that.
So I just want to make sure that you understand.
I think everybody's familiar with all that. Let's just stick to what we're trying to deal with tonight.
Very good. So then, obviously, we have a seam roof. And I think we provided something like thirty-five, forty pictures going through the historic district, looking at these seam roofs on these accessory buildings. And so certainly, our intent originally was to do shingle and to do a seamed roof. We also have approved on the main house, a seamed roof in the back of the house, where the pitch is. So we already have that approved. So now, what we'd like to do in simplifying our roofs is go back to the cedar shake, which again, was three roofs ago. So we know there's a lot of history there. If we look at what an average roof timeline sort of is on a house, and guarantee on a house, go back to the cedar shake on the main house and then use the seamed roof on the accessory building. The red that is on there is very similar. I mean, you already see that in the historic district. But if it is offensive to someone, for whatever reason, we certainly are okay to paint back. You know, we want to, we want to add and enhance. I've been a resident of Franklin and Williamson County. I moved to Williamson County in 1985. And I have been a resident of Franklin since 1986, when I built a house at Red Wing Woods. So I've been around a long time and rode my bike through this historic district. You know, I'm not someone who's not been here, doesn't care about what's going on. I built a house, or we did a house, 312, Third Avenue South, sorry. And again, same kind of thing, the asphalt shingle and did the seamed roof. So certainly, understand and willing to work with you any way we can. And that's where we are. We're just appreciative to all the help we've gotten and guidance, and that's where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any citizens wish to comment on the application? Gail Haddock.
Thank you. I'm, excuse me, I'm Gail Haddock. I live at 213 Lewisburg Avenue, next door to this. And I want to thank the, the commission for the time and effort that you all put into everything into this project and obviously, the one before. It takes a lot of attention. I do just want to request again that you require the applicant to have a more subdued color on the garage apartment roof next door. The, the orange color is quite garish. So, so that is what I'm requesting. I will just mention, I'm, I'm not going to quibble about metal roofs and go into that. It does seem strange to me that, one thing that's not in question on this property is whether there was ever a metal roof there, and apparently, there was none. And so we're ending up with a metal roof, which, to me, and maybe this is a matter of opinion, seems more high-style than a shingle roof. So, I mean, that's part of the confusion of the way things work. But if the, but if the roof can, of the garage apartment, can be changed to a more muted color, I will be satisfied and appreciative. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other citizens wish to comment on this application? All right, hearing none, let's, I want to break this into two pieces. One, the accessory building is first, and then the, and then the main house. So is there a motion on the accessory building?
Chair, I move to approve Item Number Eight with conditions on the accessory building.
Second that.
All right, discussion.
I'd love to start.
Yes, sir. Please.
I'm of the opinion that the roof, the metal roof is appropriate, but not necessarily that color. And I'm not sure I agree with kind of the process of by which we're going to select some paint for these folks. I really think it needs to be backed into based on, and I guess this is my opinion, but I don't necessarily want them to go and have to paint some roof, some custom color to match a fix, if that makes sense. So if the addition and the garage are supposed to match when they're done, I think that's where, that's what we've heard so far, that really, the addition roof should be selected out of the pre-finished colors that come from the manufacturer, because it'll be baked in. It's a finish that will last longer than paint. And then we should paint the garage to match that, whatever that means. That would be, I think, the right approach. I don't, it feels weird to me to think that we would pick any colors. I thought we were going to have to pick off of that, and I was glad I saw four swatches. I said, oh, thank you, Jesus, that we don't have to do it off of picture one. It's really hard to see color. But I really think a more successful approach would be to pick one of the manufacturer's baked-in colors, which there may be twelve, there may be sixty, and then paint the garage roof to match that. But that they could pick one of the muted, more appropriate colors. And I don't, I'm not sure what muted means. I mean, I think a patina copper roof is kind of a dark bronze color. And dark bronze is not what I would consider muted. But it would be perfectly appropriate against a shake roof, which is also going to patina. So I don't think it has to be a sand or earth color. I think it just can't be orange or fire engine red or, you know, evergreen. I think there's maybe some dark greens and things like that. But I don't feel comfortable picking paint for somebody. I feel comfortable reacting to something they want, if that makes sense. But that's, that's my opinion on that.
Okay, any other comments?
And based on, on his comments, you can always come back to staff to approve color.
That's right.
Good. All right, any other down here? Susan?
No, I do not. I think it is kind of a strange situation, because we typically don't do that. So I, I agree with what Tyler said.
All right, any comments down here?
I may elaborate, if you'd like. The, I spend a lot of time asking applicant what the ask was. The applicant did provide a sheet from the manufacturer of the metal that has different colors. And I, I agree with you, Tyler, that color inherent to a material is more appropriate than applying a color to an existing metal, certainly. But in understanding the applicant's ask, the applicant's ask is to keep the existing metal that was installed without approval in the color that it currently is in. Or conversely, applying a paint color to the existing metal so that it better meets the guidelines. The problem with the guideline isn't really the color as much as, it's a color inherent to the material, and it will not weather to, it's not going to be an alternative material that emulates a historic material the way that guidelines would offer as appropriate. For example, cementitious siding, it's commonly approved by the commission for new builds because it emulates wood in a way that's reasonable. And we know that, because we've seen it over time. But this metal is, it's a copper color, but it will never weather like copper. And so that, that color, that sheen is inherent to it, and will never go away. So I'm just, I'm just providing you what the application request is. Now, if the commission decides that's not an appropriate way to handle that, then that's certainly the commission's prerogative. But, but my understanding from the applicant is they would like the existing to be approved, but they would be open to painting it. And those four color swatches that are on the screen and provided to you are colors that they feel comfortable painting it, if that is your choice to make.
And the motion on the floor, and seconded, is to paint it?
Right. That's, that's.
Is that correct?
However, it does say, in condition one, must be painted a muted subdued color.
Yeah, but what's that mean?
Whatever that is.
Those, those colors were provided to staff later.
All right, Josh, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, what is the end analysis on how this paint will hold up on this roof? I know that I saw that in the report, obviously, and in the materials. Like, it is intended, or it's, it can be appropriate, but like, what's the life on that? What, what has the applicant provided?
I, I have not received any information other than the selection of the urethane. I did some research online. It appears that it is appropriate urethane to use in exterior and metal applications. But to your point, we, we don't have the benefit of having case studies that show how it weathers over time.
Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing from the applicant if they, if they have any information and data that could be provided on that.
Can you come to the microphone, please, and identify yourself?
David Steele, I'm just helping Julie with the project there. In the information packet that we sent, there's a little code that you scan. It has all the information on the paint for the product, if you scan that. And there's two different types. There's a latex and there's an enamel type. And it has all the information, if you.
So what's, what's the life for each one? What's the life for the latex and the life for the enamel?
Applied to the pre-finished material.
It's, it's a permanent color, so it's going to.
That's not the question. The question is, I think, what is the life expectancy of a paint that's applied, this paint?
Yeah.
That's applied to your pre-finished material that's installed?
It's an industrial thing, so it's a lifetime material. So instead of peeling off, it may slightly fade over the years, but we're talking ten to twenty years, as, as it would be as a natural product.
When you're saying ten, is that in the, if I go look at the materials, is it going to say ten to twenty years?
It, yeah, it should be. It's, it's at the little skew.
So there's a piece of paper there, and it wasn't explained to me at all, so I did not have this information to provide to you. But apparently, this piece of.
This is for the cedar shakes.
I don't, I don't have, was it on the colors for the metal?
Yeah, it was on the colors for the metal, and then on the QR code.
I wasn't, I wasn't given that, I wasn't made aware of that. Mr. Steele, could you speak in the mic, please?
My voice usually carries, so I'm usually not used to it.
That's okay, this is because it's recorded live.
Okay. So in the QR code that I supplied, it should be in that?
I'm not sure I have that.
Yeah, well, I thought I sent them all to you.
Okay, well, there's a, I mean, we could debate that all night, but.
Yeah.
So there's a, there's a picture of the back of the paint, but it wasn't made aware to me that I should scan that QR code to find out this information.
Yeah.
That was not shared with me.
I don't think that's, go ahead, Brian.
I'd like to make just a suggestion on color. And I'm, I'm not a person who, you know, it's either red, green, blue, I mean, you know, for me. But the dark bronze color, the, the previous outbuilding that's going to be at 202 Gallery, they're going to have a bronze roof on it. The greenhouse, the city used to own that, it's across the street. It has a bronze-colored roof. The one next to them has bronze. I think bronze would be, would be a very appropriate color for this. But as far as the shade of bronze, we can let staff approve that. And I'm just throwing that out as a suggestion to the board.
I think it would be very acceptable to meeting with staff and picking a color. And I do have the color chart for the metals, that we could go by that and look and let her pick something out and then match the paint to that.
But it would be dark bronze.
Yeah.
And Sherwin-Williams has a, they don't tell you they have this, but they have a top-secret chart called the Bronze Tones Chart. And it's only for like licensed pro painters. But if you ask for it, they have it. I'm looking at it right here.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend the motion.
Okay.
That, that the metal roof is painted bronze, a dark bronze, and come back to staff for approval.
I second that.
Any discussion on that?
I'm just still unclear as to, I feel like we've been offered a solution. One, what was installed wasn't what was approved, which is just a red flag to me, quite frankly, to begin with. And it's just, but I feel like the product that's been brought forward, I don't necessarily feel like we've been given the information we need to understand what that really is, what it will do. Will, I mean, is it going to be, maybe, maybe the commission will know, other commissioners. I don't know, but I'm concerned that, you know, it's not, to me, so much about a metal roof or the color. It's, we're here because what was approved wasn't complied with to begin with, which quite frankly, is just concerning. And then, two, we, we don't have really any details on the product. And that, that just is, that's concerning to me. Bronze aside, metal aside, that's, that's my issue.
I think that's a valid point.
Can I add something to?
Yeah, go ahead.
To add to what you're talking about, Josh, is the warranty and the product performance on the paint side is one side. How it adheres to an existing in-place metal roof is another consideration. You would need to know, how does that really affect it? Is it the best solution anyway? And then, does it deface the warranty on your metal roof? Because that metal roof is already coated, sealed, ready to deal with the weather. So if the Sherwin-Williams isn't industrial, usually, they do have applications for that as well. But I just, there's two sides to both of these products. And I don't think we have enough information. And it is unfortunate that we're choosing something. And it's hard to choose chip colors. I mean, they all look the same, but I do agree with the anodized or the bronze tone effect. But it just is unfortunate that we have to pick a solution to something that got, made it through without approval.
Is there any other discussion on this amendment? And then I'll, I'll talk about my, I'll give you some comments. But I'm, let's deal with the amendment first. Any other discussion? So all in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Any opposed, yes?
I abstain.
Okay.
Okay, so let me.
We got. We got, all approved except for myself, and then Scott has abstained.
So 611.
All right, we're here, and Josh touched on this. We're here because what's been done was not originally approved. The asphalt shingles on that roof is what was approved, and that was what was on the plan set. The currently constructed building is already more prominent than the main house, primarily due to the topography and its location. And we agreed when that was discovered that staff worked with the applicant on a solution to mitigate that problem. And, and staff, we, we agreed, this commission agreed that staff could do that. The current metal roofing only exacerbates the height problem and does not complicate, complement the character of the main building. I believe that painting prefinished metal will only lead to maintenance problems down the road for whoever owns that property. So I'm not gonna support anything other than the asphalt shingles that were originally approved in the original application. So that's, that's my two cents on it. And I think the, I'm, I'm sorry we're at that stage, so, anyway.
I just need a clarification.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we agreed that it would be up to staff to review the material? Is that what you said?
That's what this amendment said, that you just voted on.
But the overall emotion-
We hadn't done the main motion yet.
Right.
I'm saying originally, when the metal roofing was installed, is that something that staff approved?
So the metal roofing installed was never approved.
Was never approved.
There's a stopper order on the property now because there is no, it, it's not in compliance with the city's approved plan or the building permit. And so the applicant is choosing to ask to change the color of the existing, if the existing color is not approved by the commission, in lieu of removing the roof and putting on-
Asphalt shingles.
Asphalt shingles. Or, or another metal that is approved by the commission.
But we did approve metal and shingles. We just did, we put more-
We approved metal on a dormer in the back of that structure. That was, that was the only-
But it was absolutely, to your point, it was absolutely installed incorrectly. There is a stopper order on the, on the project.
But it's completed now. The roofing's in place.
The roofing's in place, but the, the project is a standstill.
Okay. So we're back to the main motion as amended, then.
Could you state the motion?
Approve the painted metal accessory, the roof, approve painted metal accessory building structure.
With bronze paint.
Painted metal roofing on the accessory building.
Point of clarification, is that, is it, it sits today?
What?
Is that how it sits today? Approved what has been done up to the, today?
That's what the motion is.
Okay.
But to paint that existing metal roofing.
And to paint it bronze, which is the amended.
Yeah, as amended. And staff approved that. So the, the amendment that was passed was the metal roofing would be painted a dark bronze and the actual bronze shade would come back to staff for approval. That's the amendment.
If the motion passes.
If the motion passes, that's correct.
If it is passed to be painted, yeah.
And, and not to forget that even if we say the roof has to come off and shingle roof goes on, the, the dormer that was gonna have metal roofing still needs to be dealt with color-wise.
Yeah. Although it's not conspicuous because it's on the back of that accessory building. But yes, you're right, you're right.
Ms. Haddock might disagree with that.
Okay, so we're back to the main mo, any other comments? Lisa?
My final question to, to staff is, in your opinion, do you feel that painting the metal seen roof of dark bronze shade would mitigate the inconsistency that we're discussing? Or the problem that we're discussing?
So that's, that's a difficult question to answer. Yes, I do think on surface value, painting it to a dark bronze color would fix the issue with the material not being consistent with the weathering pattern that you would see with, with a metal of that type. However, I'm not aware of the longevity of this urethane and how long that would last. In my staff report, I, I comment on how paint will, will peel and it will fade. And, and I, and to Ms. Worthington's point, I don't know how that prefinished metal will take to the, the, the paint or the urethane. I had asked the applicant to provide a sample of the existing roof, which he has, but I asked him to paint it with the selected color. We did not get that, so I wasn't able to show you or to, to review as part of my analysis why, how I felt that worked. So the request I was given was to paint it or to keep the existing. I do think that painting with the color would be appropriate, but I don't know if that fixes the problem the way that taking off that roof and putting on a new metal color would, or just removing that metal roof and putting on the asphalt shingles that were approved to be installed would. So it's not a simple yes or no. My apologies.
No, I, I get it.
Anything else?
I have a comment.
All right, Susan.
I, I've been sitting here and thinking about this this whole time, and it's, it's suddenly dawned on me that if we approve this, we're setting a precedent.
Yeah.
You know, that someone can come in and do what they want to do, and then, then we have to deal with it. And, and I'm going to have to say I'm not gonna be able to approve this motion. Thank you.
All right, anything, anything else? We're ready to vote on the motion as to paint the metal roofing on the accessory building with the amendment to, that the metal roof be painted a dark bronze and come back to staff. That's the amendment. All right, so we're ready to vote on the main motion as amended. All those in favor of that, please raise your hand. All those against that, please raise your hand. Okay.
Ms. Markert, did you vote?
No, I, I, I-
All right, so we're ready for, that didn't go, so that's, we're ready for another motion then.
Does motion die from?
No, we gotta have a motion, some, some action here, not just a died motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to deny approval of item eight. Point number one, that the metal roofing on accessory structure cannot be maintained or painted.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, discussion. Ready to vote?
Just in deference to the applicant, I, I understand, and we've had these things happen before. So that's why it's so complicated and difficult. I, I don't think it's asking too much to have the applicant return with what city, what staff had requested, which is a painted piece of the metal with some actual information about the longevity of the adherence of that paint to this metal. So based on that, I'm thinking we could defer this particular part of the application to the next meeting. That's just my opinion.
I, I would, thank you for sharing that. I, I would like to note too that there is a stopper order. So until there is a, a solution arrived upon that the commission agrees, then no work can be done by the applicant to finish the structure.
Okay.
So I just wanna, I just wanna clear, I just wanna make that clear.
Okay, do you have, you wanna make a motion to defer? Is that what you're?
Yes.
All right, so that kinda trumps our current motion then. Lisa, want to make a motion to defer to February?
And we can't have any further discussion then?
What?
Because the motion, if the motion's seconded, we can't have any further discussion.
That's right, that's right. So, does anybody wanna make a motion to defer it? Or second it, to second it, Lisa's made it. Okay, that dies for lack of a second then. So we've got a motion then to deny approval of the metal roofing on the accessory structure. Is there further discussion on that? Ready to vote? Then we'll do a show of hands on that. All in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Okay, unanimous. All right, we're ready for the main house now.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve a certificate of appropriateness for, what is the address?
215 Lewisburg Avenue.
Main House at-
215 Lewisburg Avenue. The main house as outlined in the staff report.
Is there a second to that? And this would be with the cedar shakes?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
All right, discussion.
Well, I would like to make a couple of comments.
Please.
So in the Review Appeal, which was the newspaper here for many, many years, in the 1920s and 30s and 40s, there are numerous ads for cedar shakes. So it, it was, it was something that was still going on here, here in Franklin. And in Jimmy Gentry's American Life, his memoir, he talks about making slingshots out of some of the, the shingle shake panels. So we know, we know even his lifetime, they were using them. So there is precedent that cedar shakes were used here. And if it's on the house, then we have evidence and documentation of that.
Yeah, and I would encourage the applicant, I'm not sure if it needs to be in the motion, but I think to avoid a similar situation, work with staff on getting the metal color correct because there is some metal that is part of the house addition. Is that correct?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Tosh about where that, where he found those cedar shakes. I couldn't really tell from the pictures. And, and whether that was also on the front part of the house, too.
That, that was on the back of the house. There's a, there's a shed roof that was added at some point, over the original roof. And so they had removed part of the ceiling in places. And so I, I went with inspector assigned to that project and my plans examiner. So they, they had a place for us to crawl up there on ladder and get in there and see. So I made pictures of that. The last run, it's like they had roofed down to that point and applied the green shingle roofing and then just roofed over that, that portion of it.
All right, so, so what is that? Show me, right there. Where is, is that the shed that was added on the back or the addition on the back?
That, that's not my photograph there.
So unfortunately, civic clerk appears to be down, so I can't pull up the item report with Randy's photos. But, but my understanding is that he was inside that shed addition looking into the roof structure where that shed addition attaches to the main.
You're wel, you're welcome to look if you like.
I, 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 that's all right. I mean, I'm just trying to get an idea of where you, exactly where you, in the back of the house is where you got the cedar shakes.
Yes, sir, on, on that part where the shed roof had been applied and it was underneath the, the shed roof for that, where they had been added over time. And like I said, it was just the last run there. It's like they got down there and just didn't change it out. They had roofed over it at some point. Now, when we went to the front of the house, we did not find cedar shakes anywhere on the front portion of the house.
And when you got, I'm sorry, I missed that last part.
We went to the front of the house after we checked those two areas. And once we went to the front of the house, we didn't find any evidence of cedar shakes on those lower runs.
They had taken them off, the front.
Just for my clarification, Mr. Tosh, when you're saying you see this, you saw this cedar shake, you're, that's not, wasn't limited to the shed roof portion that was added. That's actually on the main portion of the house?
That was on the main roof of the house, underneath the roof that had been added.
It's just that access point by which you can see that without tearing off the roof.
I just wanna make sure it wasn't just on the shed.
No, no, it was, it was underneath on the existing house roof.
Well, when I, and I've, I've been up and down that street a good number of times, and I walked up there last week. I don't see anything from that house down to the railroad tracks on that side of the street that has anything but asphalt shingles. Now, that doesn't mean that this didn't have cedar shakes at some point. Obviously, it had at some part of the house. But I, it just doesn't seem right to have cedar shakes on that house when there's nothing else along that strip of houses on that side of the street. But that's just, I mean, that's just me. If it's, if there's good evidence there, then obviously there's, that we've, they've complied with what the request is. And again, that's not what we originally approved. So we approved asphalt shingles on that house, on the main house.
The, the main house already has asphalt shingles.
I understand that, but they're gonna have to re-roof it probably, so.
Right, so there, but there wasn't a requ, they, they didn't, to, to the applicant's defense, they never, they're asking this in due process.
Right.
Got it.
Yeah, they, they've not, right, it's not like they've put the cedar shake on.
No, 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 I, I got that, I got that. Okay.
Given the evidence that there were cedar shakes there and that staff confirmed that, I would, I would be in support of the application.
I don't, yeah, I don't think we got a lot of choice. Okay, any other questions? Comments? All in favor of that then, of the, approve the cedar shakes on the main part of the house, please raise your hand. All right, unanimous.
All right, so just to recap, the motion to approve the use of cedar shakes on the main house is approved. The motion to maintain the existing metal or to paint the existing metal on the accessory has been denied.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, we're ready for our next item, consideration of alterations. Parkway, parking driveway ramp construction, front yard fence, gate construction at 128 Fourth Avenue North.
So please bear with me, it does appear civic clerk's down, and I apologize for that. We have gone into IDT and pulled that remaining application so I can share that on the screen with you and the public. So I am pulling that up right now. The internet's great until it's not, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll have to, you'll have to refer to, to the screen.
Yep. I think we got it, though.
Okay. The application concerns the proposal for a certificate of appropriateness for the construction of an accessibility ramp, alterations to a partially completed parking area, and the installation of a front yard fence and gate at 128 Fourth Avenue North. All the proposals were previously approved in early 2021, so almost two years ago. Under our previous set of design guidelines, the work has not been completed, however, and those associated approvals with the certificates of appropriateness have expired. So the applicant is coming forward to seek reapproval for those items. So to start, the accessibility ramp is proposed to be located at the rear of the house. What you're seeing on the screen here, and I'll try to zoom in as much as I can, is the house. The lot is wider than it is deep, but here's the existing structure. Here is the parking area to the left of the structure. And here's the area where the accessibility ramp is proposed to be placed. So at the rear and left corner. It's proposed to be constructed in wood and designed to include wood and metal balusters and a painted wood lattice. The guidelines recommend that ramps be composed of wood and placed on rear secondary elevations for residential forms like this one. The guidelines also recommend that ramps be designed to be reversible and have minimal impact on historic features and that detailing be sim, similar to that found on the historic buildings onto which they are placed. Wood baluster should be selected for consistency with the guidelines. In this case, in lieu of metal, as both metal and in wood are proposed by the applicant, the location, design, and detailing of the ramp otherwise are consistent with the guidelines. Parking alterations, you see a partially, a parking lot here. It's partially constructed currently. The guidelines recommend that one visual, or minimize visual impacts on parking by following historic patterns. Typically, that would be along the rear, but in this case, the side, given that there is no parking essentially permitted by the constraints of the lot configuration. Parking for non-residential uses in residential buildings should be located behind the building or further screened from off-site. Materials for parking areas for non-residential uses in residential buildings like this one must comply with the zoning ordinance. The proposal is to the side, the depth of the lot doesn't allow for the placement at the rear. The nature of the fencing may allow for visibility of the parking, which is not consistent with the guidelines, so additional landscaping may be utilized to screen that parking from the street view. The materials for the parking are listed differently throughout the document, but ultimately, the material- but ultimately, the material must comply with the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance will dictate that it's an ADassable material such as asphalt, something that's a surface that a wheelchair could glide upon. You'll see in the application here, there are some references to gravel, and then there's some references to concrete apron or to asphalt. But ultimately, that material must comply with the zoning ordinance. Moving on to the fence and gate. This was reviewed by the commission and approved previously under the previous set of design guidelines, but the guidelines do currently state that one side of the fence is and will also be compatible with the architectural style of the building. For example, wood picket fence would be appropriate for a vernacular frame house, while a cast iron might be more appropriate for a higher style, more ornate architectural form. In this case, if I recall correctly, a couple of years ago, the applicant did request picket, as that was recommended by the DRC at that time for this style of home, which is more of a vernacular style. The proposal includes that scalloped wood picket in the primary yard. That scalloping was actually a condition of approval set by the DRC previous, or the Historic Zoning Commission previously, so that has carried into this proposal now. The fencing extends along the primary yard and ties into swing gates, which you see on the screen here, and in the same style. And then where the fence is along the side yard, that will not be scalloped. It's proposed to be a straight picket. So the scalp will just be across the front, straight picket down the sides. There is a pedestrian gate also proposed. Let me scroll up. So this is the area across the front of the yard, scalloped here, scalloped here, inset for swing gates for the driveway, comes back out, scalp, 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 pedestrian gate. And then it goes all the way down to the side. And once it goes down the side, that's a straight picket on either side. The proposal is consistent with the guidelines for the height at three feet. The proposed swing gates appear to be consistent with the guidelines, but should be considered or reconfigured, if not already, to swing inwardly and not open into the public sidewalk. These might swing, they appear to swing inward, but they are reassessed. And so as long as they do not swing onto the public sidewalk, that would be consistent with the design guidelines. The site plan shows stone piers for the gate, but page 201, which you see on the screen here, demonstrates wood posts with a quote-unquote Martha's Vineyard post caps. Based on the design guidelines, the use of wood piers would be more appropriate with the context of the building and more consistent with the recommendations of the guidelines. So with that, it is recommended that the application be approved by the commission with the conditions that wood balusters be selected for the ramp in lieu of metal for better consistency with the guidelines, that the applicant utilize wood post for the fence and gate for consistency with the guidelines, and that the gates swing inwardly and not open onto the public sidewalk. Additional landscaping may be required to screen parking off-site per the zoning ordinance. This does require a building permit through the Building Neighborhood Services Department, so the zoning team will look at that and determine if additional landscaping would be needed beyond the fence in order to screen that parking. Any additional changes would need to be returned to staff. Thank you.
Thank you. With the applicant, the remaining applicant, please come forward. I think we need more than that.
Yeah, that's probably true. Hey, no, I appreciate your thoroughness. Thank you, Amanda. All right, I'm back.
All right, introduce yourself for the record.
Ben McCrery, Chisel Workshop.
Any other...
128 Fourth Avenue.
Touch on any changes from the last time we approved this.
There are none.
Thank you. Okay.
The only changes that are there are changes that were brought into the design as a result of conditions of approval set by the commission at that time.
Okay, well, it might have been the scallop. I remember that.
Exactly.
In fact, Mr. Harrison's predecessor, Mr. Nick Mann, made that recommendation, which kind of got it going, as I recall. And that was, which wound up being good. That was a great recommendation. Okay, there's no public left for us to comment, so... So we need a motion, then, from the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve the project as presented.
I second that.
Thank you, Kathy.
And that includes staff conditions, yes.
All right. Comments? Sometimes it's best come last.
We're tired of talking. It's worth the wait. Could have gone many ways.
Are there no comments, then? Ready to vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
No.
None. So we're all ready.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fran.
Any other business? If none, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Passed. We're adjourned.